Hey, I'm gonna call the Longmont Housing Authority Board of Commissioners Tuesday, July 16, 2024 meeting to order. Let's have a roll call. I will start with Chair Peck. Switch gears.
Commissioner Hidalgo-Ferring.
Commissioner Rodriguez, Commissioner McCoy.
Commissioner Chris.
We're doing roll call? Are we on mute? Oh, we are on mute. Okay.
We're not even on camera.
Oh, there we go, yes. So we're doing roll call and it's up to you. We're at you now, Marcia.
Oh, I'm here.
Yes, you are.
Commissioner Marcia Martin.
Thank you. Molly?
Here.
All right, next, we're gonna go over to the other side of the table.
Lauren Sully, Assistant Director, LHA.
Harold Dominguez, Interim Executive Director, LHA.
Erin Myers, Executive Assistant.
Kendra Daniels, Accounting Supervisor.
Eugene Mays, Attorney.
Katie needs to... Oh, there she is. Yeah, Katie.
Hi, sorry, Katie Bellach, Earth City Bellach.
Thank you. So now we're at Agenda revisions and submissions of documents. Do we have any revisions to this agenda? Okay. No submissions of different documents either. Okay. I need a vote to approve the June 18 minutes.
Wait a minute, I actually have a question about the minutes.
Oh, okay. Let's vote, take a second then discuss. Can I just move?
I move the agenda through the minutes.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner McCoy, signed by Commissioner Rodriguez to move the minutes, the June 18 minutes. Now we'll open it up for discussion.
Agenda, well, Item 2, Agenda revisions and submission was approved 6 to 0, but then Number 3 was approved 5 to 0, and then later on it says that Vice Chair Hidalgo-Ferring arrived at 10. So I'm thinking she didn't vote for one of those.
Both of those.
Yeah, probably Number 2, since it came earlier. And then also, I was absent that evening, but I was actually at the CMF conference, so it's citywide.
So what was the motion? Did it say unanimous?
It says, well, it says 6 to 0, which was everyone...
It was 5 to 0.
5 to 0. Okay, so we need to correct that. And then my name would be off of the agenda revision.
Yeah, on Number 2.
On Number 2.
It's a change.
5 to 0, okay. So we need to move to make that amendment?
Amend Item Number 2 and amend Number 1, but I was absent.
Or just, yeah, we don't...
We don't care.
No.
How do you second that?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the agenda of June 18 be amended to take off Counselor Hidalgo-Ferring's name on the roll call?
Yeah, for the...
Agenda revisions and submissions of documents and that the vote be recorded as 5 to 0. Let's vote on that amendment. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All those opposed? No one. So that carries 6 to 0 with Commissioner Yarborough absent. Now we need to vote on the minutes as amended. I move the June 18, 2024 minutes as amended. Second. It's been moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Hidalgo-Ferring. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. So that carries 6 to 0 with Commissioner Yarborough absent. Well, now it's probably invited to be heard. I do see some public here. Would you like to speak? You have three minutes if you'd like to speak.
I don't know.
Okay.
If I do, I just wanna stand.
Stan, state your name, please.
Since I was asked to come, I've been gone. Open Heart Surgery.
Oh, I'm sorry.
George Jetta, John Sten, and I live at 320 Homestead Parkway, Longmont, Colorado, 80504. It was March 6, or March 7, and it was emergency, but I'm doing okay now. I'm never mind mine. I liked living at Spring Creek, but we were talking today about some of the things that's not getting done. It's beginning to look like a junkyard, and I don't want to be offensive or unkind. Looks like with the money stuff, they could be kind of fixing things more than they're doing, so there's been a lot of complaints. So I was kinda asked if I want to come tonight, and I don't want it in a bad way. I just want it in a nice way because it's a real nice place. So I guess I'm waiting to see how or where. We did have John talk today and stuff, but, you know, he doesn't really know. So different things have been promised, and I know it takes time to work things out, but Lord willing, we're gonna be getting them done because it's, like I said, we don't want a junkyard. It's a beautiful place. So I'd mention that, and I did mention to John that I found alcohol in the TV room and took it to him. So, you know, different things like that are a little troubling. I don't do that, but I'm not a person that wants to be a troublemaker too. I want a good place to live and be a blessing and not, you know, complain in the wrong way. Just encourage, work together where we can, get some of this stuff done. Thank you for letting me talk, and it's nice seeing all these special people.
I'm so glad that you came through that surgery.
Oh, yes, thank you very much.
Okay.
So my name is Arlene Zorkman, and I live at 2007 Wyndham Drive. So I attended both Fall River and Spring Creek coffee, with coffee and conversations today, and several things came up that I'm hoping are gonna be covered tonight because I would like to be able to at least respond back to them and say, this is an answer to your question. So both places talked about cameras and what's going on with the cameras, and both places talked about the landscaping contract and the concerns about that they have. By the way, the grass is looking great in both places. And then the other thing that they both talked about was what's going on with the phone system out there and the contact with that. So those were the things that were particularly interesting.
Great, thank you very much. Seeing now I have close public invited to be heard, and we're on to old and new business. We have four resolutions. The first one is LHA 2024-12, Acceptance of Colorado Health Foundation Grant and Loaning of the Funds for the Ascent and Hover Crossing Project. And I am going to call on Molly O'Donnell.
Sure, thank you. Commissioners, tonight's first item is about accepting the two...
You have...
...grant from the Colorado Health Foundation to support the building of the Early Childhood Education Center at the Ascent for Hover Crossing. This is the one, last, two last items on Ascent that we're not prepared in time for the closing resolution that you all considered in June, because we were still, for this one, still negotiating with the Colorado Health Foundation. So we have a form of the grant here. We are doing final negotiations with them, but it, all of the major pieces are covered here in the form of the grant that you see. And so one of, part of the approval is to allow us to wrap up those negotiations as long as it's in its substantial form that you're approving tonight. It also allows us to loan those funds into the partnership, which we do need LHA Board acceptance to do. And then one key piece that surrounds this is the leasing of that Early Childhood Education Center. We've been working with Colorado Health Foundation, Wild Plum, and Penrose, our development partner, for some time to figure out the best scenario for leasing. And so the proposal is for LHA to enter into the master lease so that LHA and the partnership have that leasing relationship, and then LHA will sublease to the Wild Plum Center. That just turned out to be the best way to get everyone comfortable with what they needed all the way up to our tax credit and Lester. So Katie is also here tonight, that can answer any more detailed questions if they come up, but I wanted to open that up for questions if there are any.
Are there any questions from the commissioners on this resolution? Interim Director.
So Commissioners, one of the things that I wanted to say about this grant, Matt asked me a question before. This is a significant grant from the Colorado Health Foundation for early childcare. When you look at a $2 million grant for this, as you all know, as we were heading into this, there was some question as to whether or not we were going to even be able to include early childcare because it's not in a qualified census tract, so we couldn't include it basis. But for the Colorado Health Foundation investing in this project, we were not going to make the numbers we needed to include. So definitely wanted to publicly thank the Colorado Health Foundation for this grant because it is allowing us to, for the first time in Longmont, include early childhood education with affordable housing, which is attaching to the goals that you all set out that the city council and has a housing authority board. The city also put in $575,000.
Twenty-five.
How much?
$525,000.
$525,000 from ARCA funds in to fill this gap. So again, building the capital stack, but the Colorado Health Foundation has really helped us to accomplish this.
I do have a question. This is a great idea to have this all in a commercial area too, where commercials are very accessible. Is that I was just confused about the addresses. Is the childhood education gonna be in the front part of Walgreens or behind one of the homes you're gonna be?
It's behind Walgreens, it's on the northwest corner of the project, and I can't, it's a, you know, that center where you have Baskin Robbins and...
Yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna be diagonally across from that.
And these are separate homes or all attached?
It's all, it's all, it's more like an apartment style structure. The difference in this project is gonna be, it's gonna be 1 through 4 bedrooms, which is also distinctly different than anything we've done thus far, because when we were looking at our housing and study, one of the things that was clearly identified is the need for affordable family housing. The only other affordable family housing that we currently have in our portfolio is Aspen Meadows Neighborhood, which is, how many units?
Twenty-eight.
How many?
Forty-eight.
So 28 units. So this is gonna be a significant increase into non-age restrictive family units, which is something that we are focusing on as we look to further develop it because it's just a void in our community.
It's a nice place for...
Yeah, I have a question. And just for clarification, these, this early childhood center is giving priority to the individuals who are the families that aren't living there?
Yes.
So I wanted to make sure you got...
There's a, there's a priority. It's not strictly for those living in the housing, just Wild Plum obviously needs to fill the spaces.
Yes.
But we do have an agreement with them that we're gonna do some pre-enrollment, pre-leasing alongside to kind of push that forward on the front end, and then as well, there's a two-week period that if they have an open spot, that they're gonna hold that for individuals that live in the housing, and then obviously if no one takes that spot, then it'll open up to the general public. There are some caveats with that, but if we do have Head Start slots, there's some other factors that have to go into that, but they're gonna kind of work towards, if they are Head Start spots, how they integrate the housing into kind of a point system with Head Start spots.
Is it still too early in the process to know what the capacity is?
As far as how many children?
How many children would it serve?
It's three classrooms, and I'd have to, I'd have to look on the ages. We anticipate, I think it's around like 40 children. So I think it's a little bit less than that, but three classrooms.
Three classrooms, okay, thanks. Commissioner Rodriguez?
Thank you. So these monies are specifically allocated or going to be allocated for construction, correct?
Correct.
And so sustainable programming funding will have to come from somewhere else?
Yeah, that's what we're working on with Wild Plum. So Wild Plum will be charged with that piece of it and working. They do give, what's the program in the accounting drawing?
C cap?
C cap. So, you know, when C cap opens up, go ahead.
And the Longmont Community Foundation is very interested in stepping in to help them stand up the center, because they should get a fully built out shell of the center, but then for furnishings and equipment and toys and books and all of the things that actually come into opening up an early childhood education center. We've got some very, very good conversations going with them on that.
The value in this, if we go back to the conversations we had on early childcare, is really one of the biggest impediments for that right now, space. And space that are low to no cost, and those are things that we're trying to bring into this project.
Well, as you know, Jim Golden has told us over and over again, be very careful about the one-time funds, right?
Yeah. So, yeah, this is construction.
Construction is obviously an appropriate place to put one-time funds, so just checking to see what, what the thinking was surrounding further funding of program.
Yeah, and that's part of what you said, maybe, I think it's in this one, is this also allows us to then move the money from the Health Foundation to the housing authority to the project itself.
Thank you.
Do we have any more questions?
I just wanna make sure that we highlight that it is a grant, like any other grant, and like most grants, if you fail to succeed, then they can be recovered. This one gets a little more specific in those recoverability milestones, so we did a lot of work with Penrose to organize who would take responsibility in the very small chance event that that ever happened. And really, we think that we can avoid it altogether because if they're looking, the Colorado Health Foundation is looking for service enriched housing, and so an early childhood education center is one of those. But then also, if we absolutely had to, which not one part of us anticipates this, we've got a plan in place with this grant to backfill with another form of service enriched housing if we absolutely will, Wild Plum could not move forward, which all signs are pointing to that is not a possibility. But I just want you to know that there is, LHA does share with Penrose in the guarantee to make sure this funding stays in the project.
And there's three or four steps before we can get to that, in terms of reaching out to other childcare providers. You know, we even talked about worst-case scenario, if we had to, figuring out how on the city side and our public service department, we can sign and perform the function. So before we ever get to the point Molly talked about, there's like three or four others that will work for it, so we think the risk profile's really low on this one.
Maybe just to note that recoverability period for this grant is only for the first five years, so it's a five-year timeframe, and which is really relevant. Again, obviously, this is all worst-case scenario, and so to have an operating childhood education center for five years, we're not, we feel very confident and hope that it's well beyond five years, so, or anticipate, not hope.
I think it's amazing project, and I think that Longmont should be very, very proud that we are doing this project. So, are there any more questions or discussion? So I need a motion for Resolution 2024-12. I'll move Resolution LHA 2024-12.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Suzie Hidalgo, signed by Commissioner McCoy. Is there any more discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That passes 6 to 0 with Commissioner Yarborough absent. Thank you, Molly and Harold.
That's all, man.
So we're now at Resolution LHA 2024-13, Approval of First Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement with City of Longmont for 2024 Support and Services. Does this go to Molly as well?
It does. So this is a pretty straightforward amendment of our annual IGA. Really what it does is indicate that Tracy DiFrancesco, who is a city employee that was contracted through this IGA to do the LHA's HCV work and other compliance work, she has retired from the city, but she does, did want to keep working for LHA, so she was retired from the city and then accepted the position on the LHA side. And so this reflects that appointment to that position. And then there's a second piece, but I'll pause in case there's any questions on that first.
So this is, that's amazing that she wants to continue.
Yep, after, I think, 17 years is what it ended up being, the city service, so. And then on the second, is Tracy there tonight? She's not there, right? No, okay. And then on the second side, LHA's Forestry Division has expressed interest to help with pre-care services. They really see LHA as an extension of the city, residents, just like residents may, and so they want to help LHA have a more robust pre-care program, and so they've offered those services. And so that's all at LHA's IGA. It really is not a very, it's not a very heavy lift for them in terms of workload and capacity for the few trees that LHA does have on its property, so it seems to be a win-win for everyone, and that is reflected in this IGA as well.
Great, is there any discussion, Commissioners, questions?
Well, I have a question. Wasn't this on our consent agenda?
Yes, you did see this already as a rule.
Yeah, so I'm just function-wise going, how...
You see it twice.
Okay.
Because you have to, the way it's structured, you have to act on it as the city, and then you have to act on it as a housing authority as well.
Okay. Great. Good catch, though. So can I have a motion if there's no more discussion on 2024-13?
I move 2024-13.
Seconded.
By Commissioner Chris, seconded by Commissioner McCoy. Any more discussion? Nope. All right, let's vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And that passes 6 to 1, 6 to 0 with Commissioner Yarborough absent. Onto the next resolution, LHA 2024-14, Accept Second Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement for CBG Funds for the LHA Security Cameras Project. Excuse me, Security Cameras Project. Are we back to Molly?
So this is just a simple amendment to that IGA for the CBG funds to extend the timeframe for implementation. This has been a long time, this project has been a long time coming. The residents have been asking for it for a long time, and so what we really got tied up in the last, between a year and a half and two years since the city council originally approved the action plan to use the funds for this purpose, is procurement. And so coming up, we wanted to follow the city system, or city's progress on coming up with a citywide system that LHA could tap into to have economy of scale and make sure that everyone had access to the camera footage if needed, including sharing more efficiently with public safety. And so we wanted to follow the process that the city was following, which used ARCA funds to try and come up with that integrated camera system. So progress had been made there, and there is a contract in place with a camera provider, and then we do know a separate contractor that has the relationship with the city for the ongoing, maybe the install and ongoing maintenance. And so we intend to use those CBG funds on purchase of the equipment only through this federally prepared contract that the city did, doing an LHA cooperative version of that contract. And we're getting that all finalized right now, and we're doing a site walk with the contractor later this month, and so the hope is to have all of these cameras purchased and then installed here by the, purchased by the end of the summer and installed by the end of the year. So we have made a lot of progress, but it was, we had to jump through quite a few hoops. But, so this just gives us some extra time to make sure we get that all implemented by the end of the year.
Yeah, so to update you all, the camera project, so you have to federalize the funds. And federalizing the funds based on the different funding sources really created a lot of process that we had to go through. And then finding a system that really was more of an open platformed system, because so many of these systems that were in place are proprietary. What I mean by proprietary is that you have to use all of their equipment, you can't integrate other equipment into the system. So, you know, we started looking for bids that were in the open system that met the federal requirements. A lot of those were proprietary systems. We then went to moving down the best value approach in terms of how we'd acquire it, how we'd run acquire it, ended up finding a bid. The platform that we're gonna be using is Monstaun, and so Monstaun is more of an open base platform that not only allows us to utilize cameras, but within the camera system, you can integrate parking management, you can integrate access control, and so what I mean by access controls, when you buzz into facilities. So over time, if you place a camera there, when somebody buzzes in, it can capture images. And so those are some things that are pretty important for us from a security perspective because we do have people routinely getting into facilities who aren't supposed to be there. As we look at parking control and where people are supposed to park, we can have cameras that can look at the area, and then with the AI platforms, they can tell us where people aren't supposed to be and things like that, so we can integrate it within the system. That's the LHA side that they're getting the benefit of, the stuff we're doing with the cities. From the city side, the cameras that we're utilizing can also monitor stream flow, water heights in creeks. If the cameras are placed strategically, they can also take the feed and use it in Becky, the train, train app that Becky was creating, and once you get enough locations, you can start managing. So this is really a holistic solution that we're bringing into play, and that's another piece that took time because we're often too out to find single solutions, and the world's changing so fast, we really wanted that open platform, and that's what Monstaun's gonna be.
Sounds amazing.
In terms of, so I'm looking at schedule right now in terms of conversion of cameras. So timing-wise for the housing authority properties, we have to get the cameras, the project knowing cameras transferred first, and that's because I think that service ends in, end of August or first part of September, so we're gonna transfer those cameras first. In addition, because of some of the issues that we're seeing throughout our community, we're probably going to also need to put new cameras in other locations. And so Magna Park, for example, is, is an area that we're seeing some issues developing that we've been working on. So last week, I walked that area with police on a few occasions. David Bellon Parks, and so we've identified some additional cameras we're gonna need to place there. So the timing, as I'm looking through this, is I think we should have all of those cameras in addition done by mid-August. Once we get through that, then we'll start looking at different properties and the situations that we have versus the addition of the cameras in terms of using data to tell us where we go first in terms of what we're seeing. So I'll talk a little bit about this. Molly, did we have, did we have funding for the Aspen Meadows Neighborhood?
Yes, the neighborhood, Fall River, Spring Creek.
Yeah. So one of the first properties that I've probably done a look at is Aspen Meadows Neighborhood just because of some issues that we're seeing out there that we've seen within the last week, and I'll talk about that in the security update. So when we look at where we're gonna place the new cameras, we're gonna, that's gonna be a... we're going, that's going to be a data-driven approach based on things like calls for service, activity that we're seeing. And so it's not going to just be, we're going to start moving this one for, we go through a list. It's going to be a data-driven process in terms of what we start bringing on and how we bring those systems on.
How many cameras are you talking about purchasing?
For the housing authority, how many is it?
We're doing our site walk in two weeks to confirm the amount. Based on site walks that happened about a year ago when we were planning this out, it's something, it depends on the size of the property and the specific needs. But for example, we're proposing thirteen cameras at Village Place. That's kind of two primary outdoor cameras and then a multitude inside.
And it's a little bit different because some of the cameras that we're seeing now, so this is part of the process and what you have access to. So in some cases where we may have needed three cameras, we may only need one. Because there's cameras in this bid that actually have four lenses on them. So if you can find really good locations to place them, then you can actually reduce the number of cameras you have based on, you know, this upgraded camera. And so while it may cost more on its own, when you look at the savings that you're going to have in not having to purchase multiple cameras, it starts making sense financially. So I think that's part of going back and walking is to understand what can we do now with the new cameras now? We talk about what we have planned community-wide. We're in the neighborhood hundreds in terms of what we're putting at our parks and other locations. So it's not anything new that we're doing. It's just a continuation of what we're doing. And, you know, what I would say to you all in terms of the housing authority properties, they're viable. So about a year and a half ago, we had a domestic disturbance that led to a shooting at the neighborhood adjacent to Aspen Meadows Apartments. We actually were able to go in and get into the camera system and pull information that the police needed immediately to start figuring out who came from where, how did it end up going from there to the apartments, and get images of many of the characters that were involved. Holistically, what I will tell you is some of the preliminary data that I've received from some of the parks is that when we put them in, it did, in most cases, there was a double-digit decrease in cost for service.
That's great.
And so, and in any significant events, we've used those cameras to help us solve and come to resolution on issues in hours, if not a day, versus what could have historically taken us multiple days and weeks of rest. And so it's definitely becoming a multiplier in terms of our staff capacity and what we can do.
Does have a hint of Big Brother, though.
It does. And I think we were, you know, we've talked to the council about, we talked to you all in the council on this one. It's just when you're looking at all of these challenges, we can't be everywhere at once.
Exactly.
We can't be at all places at all times. And I think that's when community members call us, lets us utilize it. The other thing, on an operational basis, it lets us get a look at not only the housing authority properties, but city properties before we send maintenance crews and other crews out so we can actually get a sense of what we need to do. And, you know, when we look at this and we look at the capabilities, you know, down the road, whether it's this or other technology, you know, we can also utilize it when we talk about maintenance and landscaping. I think actually utilizing other technology to really get a sense of what's the moisture content and still are we overwatering, are we underwatering? And so, you know, we're just kind of scratching the surface from a safety perspective.
So it's amazing. Do you have anything to add to that, Molly? No?
Nope, other than you won't be seeing this on the city council since that is allowed to, since it's not a no-cost IGA amendment. So just the LHA board needs to review and approve.
Okay.
The Resolution 24, 2024-14.
Seconded. Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner McCoy to move LHA 2024-14, seconded by Commissioner Hidalgo Ferring. Any more discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That passes six to zero with Commissioner Yarborough absent. And now we're on our last resolution, LHA 2024-15, Approving Easement Aggre-- excuse me, Approving Easement Agreement in Connection with Ascent Development. Back to you, Molly.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to tap in Katie for this one since this is one that came up in very short order, which is why it's at the end and not with the other sent item. And so she took this one all the way through. So I'll let you go, Katie.
Yeah, so this is a pretty straightforward resolution, again, related to the ascent development. And so we are obviously going through the site plan and plat approval process within the city. And there's currently a Centrally Link/ Woman Easement underneath the proposed footprint of building. And so in order to, we need to vacate that easement and relocate the easement about five feet to the north, I believe, or to the west. And so since LHA is the current property owner, in order for the city to, in order for Lumen to vacate that easement and get that off the newly reported plat, they want their, a new easement in its place before they're willing to vacate. So the property is already covered by a Centrally Woman Easement. This is just uncovering the new location of the easement due to the building location.
Okay. Right, is there any discussion by commissioners, questions, comments?
A quick question. Do they have to, it's currently just an easement. They don't have to move any infrastructure, do they?
No, there's, no, there's not any infrastructure currently in place.
All right, that's all I have.
Do you want to make a change?
Sure, I'll move LHA 2024-15.
Seconded. It's been moved by Commissioner Rodriguez, seconded by Commissioner Chris to move 2024-15. All those, let's go, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That passes six to zero with Commissioner Yarborough absent. And then we move on to the interim executive director's report, Development Updates.
Lauren.
Sure. So ascent has been dominating Katie's life. She's been doing an amazing job getting this to the finish line. Certainly, there are wrinkles to this one that we have not hit before when we're adding in a commercial space that really ended up complicating a couple of things at the last minute. We're working our way through it. As you can see tonight, we're getting these resolutions done. But there's just, every single time we go through one of these, we recap on what we did well, especially in our case, what we did well based on our experiences. The last, this is, I think, our fourth closing in, since May 2022. So that's a lot for us, especially for, that's a lot for a large authority. We're a smaller one, but a smaller team. And so that's, that's pretty wild. And so we have a very good set of lessons learned and things to note for the next go-around. And also things that we just did really well because we have been doing this now for four go-arounds. And so we're really working to get this to the finish line. And with these new wrinkles that we didn't really anticipate in the beginning, just from the nature of adding in a commercial space and how that works with the tax credit project, we're starting to note all of this. And we're going to try and put some, memorialize some of this after we make it through. So closing is anticipated now. I think by the end of the July is still the goal. But there's a couple more steps still to take because there's a lot of moving pieces on this one and a lot of groups that are working on it. So it's all hands on deck. But we're going to get there and it's going to be great. And we're going to let Katie take a breath afterwards. Otherwise, Village is in full construction still. We're starting to move to the exterior work. I highly recommend you go out and check out the brick stain. I'm not sure, I left town on Friday morning, so I'm not sure how far around the building they've made. But they were doing it on the south face, Marilla. It looks so great. So we'll be doing a lot of work outside soon. The parking lot is shut down. We have residents, we bought parking permits at the spoke for residents to have for an extended amount of time just to make sure that while we have lifts in the parking lot for siding and the actual parking lot work happening, that nobody gets any vehicles damaged. We're in our second-to-last phase of unit work. And so I think our punch just got set for, our punch list walked to accept those units. This just got set for August 1st. And then we'll be doing the last phase of unit move-outs after that. I think that, other than that, that's the overall. But Katie, is there any other hot topics at Village going on right now that I missed?
I don't, I think that I covered it pretty well. There's lots of moving parts. The residents have been very patient in dealing with our work. There's a lot, there's a lot going on there. And so I think we, over time, since, you know, we began this in January and have definitely had to kind of realize the best way to communicate, what to communicate, what level of detailed work. So I think we had kind of a learning curve related to that. But I think, you know, working with Pinkard and we have a relocation team who's all hands on deck with the residents as they're moving, you know, all of their belongings out of their home and moving into a hotel. It's a very impactful process for them. And so I think, again, we've definitely had some learning experiences. But I think, you know, we've had the last couple coffee and conversations at Village. I've been attending personally giving construction updates. And I feel like we've kind of hit a smooth path as much as it can be with our lines of communication and the understanding from the residents. Obviously, we still have, you know, bumps here and there and unexpected things that are happening. But I think we kind of are on a good, open line of communication. So I think we are nearing, the lobby is getting close to completion. And so I think, again, the residents are now kind of seeing the fruits of the labor that's been happening for many months. They've obviously seen it in their units. But we've fully taken over their common areas. And so they're, they're very excited to get those back. And we're excited to have a finished product to give back to them, so.
Yeah, what we're saying.
That's really the extent. Oh, go ahead. I was going to say, that's the extent of updates because those two projects are all hands on deck, so.
And there's some operational components that Lauren's working on in terms of file management, getting files, leasing up. But when you look, you know, they make it sound easy. You can't imagine the amount of disruption that occurs when you're working on a property and you're going through this process because you literally have people living adjacent to units that are being reconstructed. And--
The noise, the disruption.
The noise and the, I mean, it's just, you can't minimize it. And so when you look at what we're working on, how, this is as significant as it gets. And so you have to shift and adjust your staffing in order to manage those situations.
Did, was the issue with the flooring ever resolved? Remember when?
At Aspen Meadows?
Oh, yeah.
Were you asking Aspen Meadows?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. The flooring subcontractor has provided a proposal to Palace, the general contractor, and we're waiting for them to package that up and send it our way. So it was, I had an update last week, so I'm hoping it comes in this week.
Okay, great.
Yeah, the letter you all--
Go ahead.
The letter that you all agreed with us sending had an impact.
Oh, good.
It was. That was very impactful.
Great.
And on--
They expect a resolution soon.
Some of these development projects, I'm looking at Eugene. Eugene caught me up to speed today on ascent because we actually had another issue kind of in how we look at waivers and what that looks like. And because it is a different project, I thank Eugene and the attorney's office for helping us figure out a path forward on that because that one could very well have ended up in another scramble on other items to bring to you also. When we say all hands on deck and everybody coming in, it's literally, we're tapping at everyone's mind. Because when you get in these closing, there's always nuances to it. And you plan well, we do it, but there's always something new that you just weren't thinking about. And it's because we've never had commercial. This is the first project where we have the leasing office and the community space not part of the actual building where the units are located. And so all of those create some nuances that we have to work through.
Great. Any more discussion, questions? Thank you, Molly.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you, Katie. The next one are update on operations, three parts. Occupancy, occupancy report.
So this is the occupancy report that I put together that we would have had for the Housing Authority Advisory Board meeting. So it's a little bit behind. We've had a few updates since then. But mostly, we're doing better on our vacants. We're slowly working through them. The two biggest issues that we have currently and continue to have are, you know, meth units. We have two currently, one at the Suites and one at Aspen Meadows Neighborhood. And so before I had reported for the one at Aspen Meadows Neighborhood that we were just pending a few things, but it's actually, that's the one that we partnered with Habitat to rebuild. And so there is a significant amount of work that we need to do in the unit to bring it back. And so we're comparing quotes and we're going out to bid with contractors because we, while we do have the capacity to do some things in house, we don't want to over-stress and over-extend our staff. I mean, we are, we're in a good place. I don't want to push us to a, you know, we're burning out staff. I mean, we're already, we're always on the precipice of that, I think.
Yep.
Because we are a small but mighty team.
We noticed that last time.
Yeah. And then the unit at the Suites, we're just, you know, meth is a continuing issue and funding that sort of remediation work is not cheap. And we don't really have a funding source for that. So we're trying to figure out how we're going to fit that in the budget and what that's going to look like. We did have a, it says bad move-outs, but it really just was unfortunately, a resident passed away at Aspen Meadows Senior. And the family was in the process of cleaning out their unit and basically left everybody to hide. So this past week, our team got together and rented a big rollout dumpster and cleaned out the unit. So we're waiting on that to get cleaned up. We are diligently working, as Harold mentioned, on leasing up Village on Main for the units that are vacant where we've had people move out during, before or during the rehab project. We had fourteen, a couple weeks ago, we've leased up two of those units already. And so between our staff working on the recertifications of the people who are already there and then people, we have CAT, the community manager, that's been leasing up the unit, renting top units. So we're keeping busy with that. Trying to make sure there's nothing else. And then working really close with MHP at the Suites because we always have a handful of MHP units that we ourselves can't fill. So working really close with their team to identify residents and get those units leased up. I think we're aiming to have six in the next couple weeks leased up.
We've moved in the coordinated entry books now, right?
Yep. Local piece conferencing.
Yeah, that may be good to start tapping on the vertical. Just needs to roll in that site.
Yeah. And then with Xenia, you know, we're not, I'm not doing occupancy yet for Xenia because it's not actually done and open yet. But we are in the lease-up process and we are actively getting tenants through the application process of that franchise so that once we do get our certificate of occupancy from that project, we can get people who've already filled those units. So that will get added as we get to that point. Any questions on occupancy?
As far as Xenia goes, when you, when you lease these, are they, are they furnished in any aspect at all?
Yes, they're fully furnished.
Fully furnished, okay.
Yep. Yep. And it's the same way, it's the same way at the Suites because we have people coming from homelessness unhoused. They're, they might not be coming with a belonging. So we want to make sure that they are set up for success, that they have what they need. I don't know what the plan is for Zenia since we are not the owner. We're just the third party manager and special limited partner. But at the Suites, we do have the donation center. I don't know if that could expand possibly, but yeah, we do prefer to.
Great. Any questions about Zenia?
I was just wondering, because of that, for instance, with the bad move out that you were talking about, are you able to salvage any of those?
In most cases, if somebody moves out and they want to donate furniture, we get them to sign over. In this case, we tried to contact the family to ask them to sign that. But I think that because the unit sat, it wasn't a situation where we could really keep the belongings. It was fairly full of stuff. So the decision was made to just clean it out.
Yeah, I think when given the opportunity, they do. There are always nuances and circumstances to every unit. And without going into a lot of detail, it's kind of a decision to make when you're walking through and see what's really there and what's happening around it and so on and so forth.
Do you ever ask Hope or the ER Center if they want to do a walkthrough and anything that they can use or that they?
We have not done that in the past.
Okay.
Yeah, I think.
I think we would be open to doing that if it wasn't going to delay cleaning the unit and leasing it out.
That makes sense.
If it wasn't something that we were gonna take ourselves, that was in good condition, that we could transport, you know.
Well, could you have the Suites donation center that we have utilized for anything that was usable? Typically, we don't typically throw away anything that's usable unless it's, it gets thrown away if it's been.
Soiled.
The meth units as last or it's not, we don't, aren't confident that it was habitable.
And there's some pieces of furniture that we're just not prepared to transport, like gigantic TV entertainment centers in the late 2000s.
Oh.
My mom used to have, you know, big wooden entertainment centers, pendants and things like that. So it really just depends on the situation.
Sounds good. Any other discussion on property updates? We are now at public health and safety.
Oh, I have some more for the property, that's occupancy. But I'm just gonna run through some quick property updates. I didn't, I didn't submit anything in writing.
That's okay.
But wanted to say that we promoted Summer, our, one of our assistant community managers, to community manager for Aspen Meadows Senior Neighborhood. So she started in that official capacity last week. We were very excited to be able to do that. And then we actually had a new employee, a new assistant community manager start yesterday, Vanessa. She is stationed over at Fall River Spring Creek. So today was her second day. We also, as you probably know, were awarded $200,000 in CBD funds for the Suites to replace all the doors and the hardware.
Great.
So we'll be working on the ARPU process for that so that we can get those funds obligated and spent before any requirements. I think we'll get that right here.
Yeah, it's on the price department.
The sooner the better. We already talked about the flooring issue at Aspen Meadows Senior. Talked about Village on Main, Fall River, Spring Creek, and really all the properties. The sprinklers are finally on, the grass is green again. So we're finally to a place where we're getting that, taking care of the next big issue that we hear a lot about and that we're tracking is weeds. Because we were focused on trying to get the landscape company to fix the irrigation systems, they have not been doing any landscaping as far as weeds or trimming. So I'm waiting to schedule, I'm trying to schedule an appointment with the company now, with Patrick, our maintenance supervisor, so that we can tackle that. And, you know, contracts can be contentious if we're not happy with the service. We definitely have things we can do. So if we have to move, we will. But it has been a difficult year. I think if you drive around in general, it's been incredibly hot and dry. I've given up on my yard, so my grass is dead. But we don't, we don't want that at every property and the weeds are sort of taking over this year due to the dryness. So we'll be tackling that. We talked about, there's some other, like maintenance, just general maintenance stuff going on now that we've got full maintenance team. We're, you know, getting things done. The team's working really well together, really happy. And then hiring updates. We've still got two assistant manager positions, one that we're hiring for the Suites in Zenia and then the one that Summer vacated when she got promoted. And then the regional property manager position, we're working on opening that up as well.
Great.
So we're still, you know, using the lens of have to, need to, want to. Because there's just things that pop up that weren't on the radar that all of a sudden become a have to. A good example of that at the Suites is the elevator. So we're having significant elevator issues there, so we have to replace it. And and so that that's not uncommon across the portfolio of properties. And I think as we get through this, it's also how do you build that ongoing maintenance?
Yeah.
And what you're doing, because I think what we're starting to see now is when you have a lack of maintenance, things will start showing themselves. It's not unlike what we dealt with here on our city facilities where you you're just kind of moving along and all of a sudden you hear a lot of pop, which then led to looking at the foundation of this facility, which then led to the library, which now obviously is letting safety and justice well. Same situation with these properties. So have to, need to, want to is still something that we talk about in terms of what we're gonna do and how we're gonna approach it. A question was brought up earlier about phones. I was actually updated today on that issue. So the issue at Spring Creek and Fall River depends. And if you live in that neighborhood, software service is just bad, generally. And I say that because I live in that neighborhood. And so literally, there's points where you can be in certain areas of your home and all of a sudden it's just not acoustic. That is the same issue that you have in Spring Creek and Fall River. But when you have these large commercial structures, that's obviously much different than it is in a home because of the materials they use to construct. Not unlike in this building where if you sit at my spot in the council room, during a council meeting, my phone will go to SOS because that spot where I sit is not great. Eugene's maybe fine, where I sit, it's not fun. In looking at that situation, they've evaluated a number of different options. Cell boosters were something that we looked at. They're incredibly expensive. And so when you look at the capacity within the budgets to actually do that, it's more difficult. We have been working with our Nexi team. And it looks like they do have a solution to help with that. The challenge of that is it's a Wi-Fi solution. So it will only work on smartphones that have the ability to trigger Wi-Fi calling. If somebody has a phone that doesn't have that, so they flip phones and things like that, that's not necessarily going to be a solution. And so that, I've got a meeting with Valerie, the Nexi team, to talk through that and we'll include Lauren on that. But it's understanding that. So there may be a partial solution, but there is not a full solution if you don't have the ability to shift a Wi-Fi call. And then you have to set the phones up to automatically connect to the Wi-Fi system. So there's some operational issues in that. But again, it's a cost issue. So when you're thinking of things like landscaping, these other issues, how do you fit that within that property's budget is something that starts kind of impacting.
So I'm thinking weeds are not a need to?
And it's unfortunate because I don't want to tell people that.
I know.
It's important to them that where they live looks beautiful.
Exactly.
And it's a dignity issue and, but.
Yep.
There's also the cost benefit analysis. There's the time, how much staff is gonna be involved. So it's not, it's not easy.
No, it isn't.
And to be honest, weeds right now are a situation we're chasing across the board, even within our parks department, you know. When you take the weather pattern that we've seen, you take the wind that we had, even in areas that have the landscaping fabric and the rocks, the weeds aren't even rooting into the ground. They're just rooting into the dirt that's accumulated over time. And and so.
And for some reason, grasshoppers or Japanese beetles don't eat the weeds.
I know, they eat everything else.
They eat everything else that they want. So weeds are going crazy.
Danger.
Because everything else is not, you know, blocking them out.
So again, it's balancing all of these, balancing all these issues.
Well, we have four to bunch of tortoises. They love them. It's because my tortoise loves them.
Oh, there he goes.
He needs that my yard. He doesn't need my grass. He needs my weeds.
Yeah, he doesn't need the grass.
Every resident needs a tortoise. That's right.
So. So, yeah.
On the elevator thing, do you, do you have a company, an elevator company?
We have approved one of, we had two bids. We approved one. So we're waiting for them to come and do the modernization work as part of that and then have that one up and running.
Will they be doing ongoing maintenance as well?
It's actually cheaper to to cancel the current contract we have with a different company and move to the new one.
Okay.
Since they're gonna do the modernization, it makes sense to have them doing maintenance as well and they are less expensive.
Okay, great. Are those all the properties you're updating this on? Okay.
Lauren's also gonna do the next one.
And then I've got, Sarah Arnie's not here tonight, but she sent me a list of items for the public safety update.
Okay.
First one is that resident issues have been low as far as public safety.
Great.
We haven't had a ton of calls for service, which is really great.
Yes.
You know, knock on anything would. Village on Main cameras, you know, we talked a little bit about cameras. She did a walkthrough yesterday and thinks that the cameras should be up and running in less than a month if all things go well. We received a shipment of meth detectors today. So those are in a box waiting to be, you know, put into units. And we're working on identifying which units we're gonna do. And obviously, we're only gonna put those in units that we know are clean, vacant, tested negative because we're not gonna put them in a unit that we don't have that information. We are also planning on having fire drills in August for Spring Creek and Fall River. They've been asking for that. And we were waiting for Vanessa to start. So now that we have an assistant, we can get that rolling. And then Sarah has been assisting us with background checks for Zenia and the Suites. We were having issues with our background check company before. We've worked out some of those kinks. But we're having Sarah do sort of a inline review of what she has access to. And it's been great because a lot of the background checks will tell us, you know, Schedule One, someone was arrested for misdemeanor felony, Schedule One drugs, something like that. If we don't actually know some of the details, and so she's able to provide that detail, which is important because at Zenia, we have a very limited scope for denying because it is housing first and there are state housing vouchers. We are only denying for certain things. And so we need that that information as the backup for that process. So it's been really good to have her doing that. I think that's everything that she had to mention.
So something that's coming to light on public health and safety updates. So obviously, in the camera conversation, I talked a little bit about, and you all been receiving these emails in terms of what's occurring at Laney Park. So to give you a sense, we've been really active over there in the last two weeks, especially late last week and then into this week. I've personally been out there with police cars, dealing with issues, trespassing individuals for drug use and other things. What we're starting to find is there's a location that, so when we, Aspen Meadows Neighborhood, there's a vacant lot adjacent to it. And that vacant lot is privately owned. And Sarah's been working to try to get a trespass affidavit because if you're driving on 21st and you see the substation that's there and then across the railroad tracks, there's a series of trees, but there's three trees that are Russian olives, which under the state definition are noxious trees that should be removed. It's pretty closed in. What we're seeing is the issues that we're seeing at Laney Park are also connected to individuals that are in those trees. We're also starting to get input from Aspen Meadows Neighborhood, and I just got briefed on this this morning or yesterday afternoon, that they're going into the patios in the neighborhood and there's been some debt issues. So when I talk about data and what we're looking at with cameras, that's likely to be, again, one of the first locations. But we're now seeing the nexus of issues in that area. And so I say that to you all because if we're able to get the trespassing affidavit and talk to the individual that owns that property, because of the impact to the affordable housing immediately adjacent to it, because of the use of drugs in that location and the park submitted sidewalk where there's a lot of children moving back and forth. And because in the area, I've personally been notified by individuals about potential selling or attempted selling drugs to to young individuals. We're asking the individual to cut those trees. If they're not willing to cut those trees because of the public safety and health issues that we're seeing, I've talked to David Bell about that's one that we need to probably get in and do as a city because of the impact to the housing authority properties, the park, and the individuals that are in that immediate area. So I say that because we build these reports and all of a sudden, information comes into us, you know, after these reports are compiled. And and so I know that there has been some feedback from people that live in the neighborhood. And I wanted to let you all know we're aware of it. We're assessing the situation, figuring out options because it is becoming more of an issue.
So I have curiosity, if you, if you find a trespasser and you issue some kind of a warrant or I don't know what you issue, what do you issue a fine?
So it depends. You know, the first time it's you're trespassing, you can't be there. If they're there again, then you start issuing citations. You know, the problem is just getting it through the system.
And so it's.
You know, we had a case where we had one individual, but I believe it had 10 to 12 trespassing violations. And just getting it through the system is tough right now. And I say that, I say the course is tough. And and so it depends on where it is. You know, if it's on our property, we actually, and we need to get the standards of behavior applied to our housing authority properties. We have the ability to take a civil approach, which is you can't be here and we suspend people. So when I say I suspended people, we suspended for X number of days based on the activity. Eugene and I talked a little bit about amping it up to have a more severe level. Then if they come back, you actually issue a civil violation, not a criminal violation, which I think is a little easier for us to move through. But it's diligence and it's staying on top of it. And, you know, I will tell you, one of the individuals that I was with police on, where we trespassed him, I drove by and they were there again. And so I had to call him again. And and so that's just part of a more holistic approach that we're gonna take with the housing authority, with the city in terms of we need everybody's eyes to to deal with situations. The other property where we're having some challenges on, and I would argue that most of those challenges actually occur external to the property. So when we talked about the Suites and some of the challenges, I think we talked about this in the last session. The majority of issues that we're having there are actually not from today, the residents at the Suites. It's the individuals that are adjacent to the Suites trying to interact with the residents of the Suites. And and that is another situation that's connected to a different problem that we're having. And that's the problem that we're having in the underpass on Hoover in the area adjacent to Village of Peaks. And it's because that area is just the passer. And it's because that area is just a pass-through. And so that's another example where on the city side and the Housing Authority side, we have to work together. The Suites was not a property that we had funding for cameras on. At five and a half percent interest, our ARPA interest is doing really well. So I'm probably going to take some ARPA funds to find the camera and installation at the Suites and in the area along the Greenway to back because that's not just a Housing Authority issue. That's, that's a broader city issue in terms of the activities that we're seeing there. And so right now, what I've been updated on recently is ancillary issues adjacent to Aspen Meadows Neighborhood and the Suites are probably rising up pretty fast in terms of what we collectively are gonna have to do with both from the city side and the Housing Authority side.
I thought that with the Neighborhood Resource Team and the good work they were doing, that this would go down, but it's.
They're doing a great job. I mean, that's the thing. They're doing a great job. And it's just, you know, when we talk about this, it's, you know, and we talked about this today with the FEMA administrators, how, how do we become nimble and how can we move? And they're trying to do it. There's just things we have to work through. And I really think this is going to be a larger topic that we're gonna bring to you all as the council, but we'll also have to bring it to you all as the Housing Authority Board in terms of some things that we're gonna need to consider.
Any discussion from commissioners? I thank you, all the work you're doing, and I'm glad that you, I didn't bring it out yet.
Depends on the day.
Yeah. Did I ask Commissioner Cumming? I did. Do you have any? Okay.
Move Weijer.
Second.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't understand what you said.
I move Weijer.
Oh, yeah. It was second by Commissioner Chris. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those positive. We are adjourned. That happens zero. Commissioner, you're asked.